Good evening. This is the October 24th meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Newcastle. And the meeting is open, but I will alert the public that we have a minimal body of three people here, which is a quorum. But you're required in your applications to receive all three votes. So if you feel that it would be better in any way and with respect for you to come back next month when we have more people and additional members of the board, you'd be entitled to an adjournment to do that.
In addition, the chairman is supposed to come at some point tonight. We don't know what time he's... So there is supposed to be a fourth board member here at some point.
At some point, hopefully.
Unfortunately. You can proceed with whatever applicant wants to proceed with the three-member board. It's fine. They just need a... It needs to be unanimous vote to get an approval.
Okay. So Mr. Secretary, you read the first application.
We're going to do the extension first?
Yeah.
So Turgetson, Mark, and Ahmed application for an extension. It's a letter.
Okay. Great. So you're applying... You're requesting a second extension?
Yes, second extension to a variance. We decided to, several months ago, reduce the scope of work from the original petition. And as a result of doing that, the architect was delayed in revising the plans, trying to get us back on his schedule. So this resulted in us not being able to get the building permit by the commencement date or the milestone that was in the variance petition.
Okay.
So as a result, we've kind of been delayed in getting our permit application into the board, or I'm sorry, the building inspector. We have submitted the plans to the building inspector, submitted them several weeks ago. They went through a preliminary review and had some comments which we have subsequently addressed and resubmitted. So we're hopeful we're pretty far along in that process. One of the stipulations, of course, is without an extension, we wouldn't be able to get the permit. So we're hopeful you'll give in our favor and grant us this extension so we can finalize the building permit and get going. I have my contractors sort of waiting for us to give them the go-ahead to order materials. So we're very much...
We are close to issuing the permit. Waiting on this resolution.
Everything's pretty clean on your end?
Yes.
Okay. One question I had, you said you're... You need less relief now, you said, because you're not doing anything in the rear yard. And the original application, I think, was a... We gave you a rear yard approval or variance?
Yes. We plan to do an addition to the house in the rear. We've omitted that from the scope.
Okay.
We now just propose to enclose the existing porch we have, the seven-by-nine porch. So we wouldn't increase the footprint there at all. But I guess it's a non-conforming to begin with. So in order to even do the porch enclosure, we'd still need a variance of some kind there.
All right. So you still need your variance. Eric, is there anything that we should be doing regarding the relief that they received on the rear yard?
They're just not... They're not going to build it in the rear yard. The variance still technically exists with the property.
But it's only if they...
It's not completed in the time of matter, so it expires.
Right. If they...
Well, if they don't use that variance within the six months, the extended period, do they lose the rear yard variance? Or does it stay with the property?
They would, but I guess if the extension does not apply to that, if they're saying the extension does not apply to the rear yard, we could note in... If the applicant would agree that they're not doing it, we could note in the extension resolution that that part of the variance is not being extended and will expire upon the six months. That's where you could do it.
Is that acceptable?
Certainly, yeah. We certainly don't intend to do the addition. I'm just concerned that wouldn't have an issue with the enclosure of the porch. My understanding is that would also require a variance, but okay.
Yeah, that I don't...
I don't have the...
I don't know what the rear yard variance is.
If you were to go forward with the original variance, if he did not build on it, six months from the resolution of this extension, it would expire. So to grant him the original variance in six months, if he built or did not build, would be determined by the expiration.
By whether he built it or not. So there's not no necessity, you're saying, to...
To change the verbiage at this point.
Condition the verbiage in the...
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good one.
Okay.
We would ask for a final survey, you know, at the end of the project.
I think the original application required a final survey?
Yes.
Okay. So nothing's being changed other than the extension, the granting of the additional... How much time do you need to start?
Well, it'd be contingent on the permit and your approval, but our contractor is ready to go. So I would imagine whenever it is granted, he can start.
Six months to start, Eric, and a year to complete?
Sure. Six months from the expiration date.
Yep.
So I make a motion that we have to close the... Do I have to move to close?
You know, there's no public hearing on an extension. So you can just...
All right. We can just make a motion on the extension.
Correct.
Okay. I would like to move that we approve the extension of the original approval for Ahmed and Mark Turgetson, 201 Campfire Road, for six months to start and a year to complete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have your extension.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hold on a minute, please.
Okay. Second one.
Yes, Lee?
Bill Spade, architect representing the Lees. We are continuing the application that you saw in the end of July for a rear yard variance for a new patio. And at the time, you had asked for us to provide documentation of landscaping in the rear yard, both the existing landscaping there and the new proposed landscaping. And then also to meet with the neighbor immediately behind the property to review that and determine that they would find that acceptable. So I think you have before you the landscape plan that we prepared. You'd also requested a letter from an arborist to indicate the condition of the existing plantings, as well as the appropriateness of the new planting we were proposing. And so there's a letter there as well from Westchester Tree Life, Rem Arnold. And essentially, what we're proposing is to plant six new Ilex steed Japanese hollies in a zone along the property line that presently the understory of the existing trees in that area is open. And that's what's providing the open view between the rear yard and these properties.
These are the plants?
Those are the proposed plants, right?
And there'd be six of those?
There's six of them. So those work very well for... They grow to about six or so feet tall. That's the rough dimension of the clear understory area of the existing plantings. So they would grow well in that scenario. There are two existing small trees, a hemlock and a maple, that we would remove to provide better sunlight to these new trees. And so those are indicated on there as well. Mr. Brandon, the neighbor, is here as well. I met with them and he and his wife and reviewed the plan.
Is only his wife that appeared last time?
No, I think both were there last time. Yes. Right. And he can certainly speak to... I think they were satisfied with what we were proposing. So that's the short of it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bill. Mr. Brandon, did you want to come up and...
Absolutely.
All right. So first of all, I thank the board for expediting this and taking care of it. Bill graciously joined us for a cup of coffee, took us, reviewed the plans, looked at the ground. We walked the ground. It met with our satisfaction. We appreciate the effort. And as far as we're concerned, we'd like to see the plan put into effect.
You reviewed the...
All right. Thank you. Happy end.
Thank you. I think Eric got resolved that we needed...
Right. If you're satisfied with the variance as proposed, we just need to include a condition approving the proposed plant.
Yeah. The planting has shown on the revised, is a property line screening plan, and that can be included.
Right. That can be included, and you may want to include, it's up to the board, a condition with respect to survival of the plants for a certain period of time. And typically, the planning board would require that as well, so...
Can we provide it for in perpetuity?
That's... That may be a little...
That might be a little hard.
Perpetuity, so...
One of the things we discussed was that there's a particular growing season when these things should be planted. So I would hope that we could get these planted as possible. That's not a demand. That's by sort of mutual agreement, so that we can let them grow.
All right. So it's in... It would be in the most appropriate season for...
Yes, sir.
Planting and growing?
That's right.
Okay.
And we're both good with that.
And that would be determined by Westchester Tree Life, or...
Presumably, yeah.
All right. Whatever makes it work.
We can put that in the...
Okay.
Right. Once the plants have survived a certain period of time, the assumption would be that they're going to continue to survive at that point. I don't... It would really not be reasonable for, you know, required in perpetuity.
So a five-year term would be all right?
Would...
Do you want a maintenance bond, a five-year maintenance, and look back?
That's up to the board, whether they feel the bond is necessary or just that the applicant would be required to replant within... If they die within five years or whatever.
I think that's pretty hardy.
I don't think... I mean, it's not what we typically do in these cases, so...
Have you learned to do with them?
See the necessity for it. We'd just like to know that you'll take care of the plants, you know, at least for a five-year period.
Okay. Yeah. And certainly, certainly the most nurseries that supply those plants give them a one-year warranty anyhow. So... But I do agree that those are known to be very hardy plants. But, you know, the Lees are just as interested in that screening as Mr. Brandon, and so...
And his wife.
And his wife. Right. So they certainly wouldn't let things pass away and not be concerned about getting it, you know, replanting it.
You just need to see if any other members of the public are here at this point.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application? All right. And I think we're ready for... Close the... Move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'd like to make a motion. I'll do it. I need your big words. No, I'll do it. Okay. I'll make the application. Application to approve the... A resolution to approve the application of Junho Lee, 6 Ludlow Drive, Chapakua, New York, for a rear yard variance for a stone patio and a single-family residence. A variance would be for a 10-foot variance, where 50 feet is required. And that's it, right?
Yeah. And then we're going to do...
Okay.
Subject to the property line screening.
Well, on the basis for granting the variance and then the condition.
Having heard the application of Mr. Lee's representative, we are satisfied that the... What is being asked for is being done to the best advantage of the property owner and is also something that will improve the neighborhood. No neighbors have appeared or written in opposition, other than the Brandons, who have appeared and been instrumental in helping amend the original request, and are now satisfied with it. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change or character to the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. No other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefits sought by the applicant. The requested variance is not substantial, and the variance will not have any effect, adverse effect, or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. And the applicant's difficulty or hardship was not self-created, more or less. I mean...
Probably is.
In any event, it would not be a controlling factor.
Right.
For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. We include the condition of the... That the planting plan presented to the board and reviewed by the Brandons be included. And that the plants be maintained for a period of five years. Anything else?
Do you need any survey? We will have a survey based on the original. Yes, there will be a survey, but that was the original intent.
Okay. The survey will come at the end of the... Is there construction being done?
There's a patio being constructed.
Patio. So we need a...
Final survey at the end of the...
A final survey upon completion of the patio. For these reasons, you have six months to start, a year to complete. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye. And you second too.
Oh, I need a second. Second first.
Second.
All right. Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have your application.
Thank you very much.
My name is Scott, and I'm asking for one foot.
One foot?
Ten foot.
Just one. I previously asked for seven, and it was approved. I should have asked for eight. I did not put a buffer in. It was my first request in terms of filling in the forms. And the actual generator was put in, and because of the footings on the house, it needed to be a little bit furtherwise, so it's actually nine inches off. And I should have put a buffer in my request, and I did not. So my ignorance will be used for future, better applications.
That's a five-man area.
Eric, can we modify our previous resolution, or we have to do a new resolution?
We do a new... You just do a new variance for the four, for the eight feet rather than the seventeen. It's just easier that way.
Okay. So nothing has changed at all?
Nope. The final survey confirmed that nine-inch difference. And that was why I measured it from the wrong spot in terms of where I did it manually. And when the surveyor came out, I was off by that.
Okay.
No change.
And it's been... That's the only item left to grant the completion.
This is a side yard variance?
Yes, sir.
It was a side yard, yeah.
Thirty-five foot.
It was already granted for seven feet.
Right. For seven feet.
Yes.
Survey's done. Everything else is in place. Is the generator working?
And when we lost power three weeks ago, it worked. I was happy.
Okay. See?
So last year, I wish it worked when we were out for 10 days, but no joy.
It helps to have, believe me. Okay. I move that we close the hearing.
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to make an application?
Sure.
Motion to...
I move that we grant the variance for Scott and Vicki Gillespie for an eight-foot variance for the installation... An eight-foot side yard variance for the installation of a generator, which has been already installed.
Yes.
There was previously a variance for seven feet, and it appears that there was a miscommunication as to the location of it. And so then now the applicant is seeking another foot.
Correct.
So based upon that...
I think we can cut it short by saying, for the same reasons as it granted the first...
For the same reasons that the original variance was granted. For the seven feet, I move that we grant the extra foot for an eight-foot variance. And...
That's it?
Thank you very much. I have...
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You are Mac.
Can I give you these pictures?
Sure.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
This is for a variance for a generator for a single-family residence.
Side yard variance for a generator.
Five feet, where 35 feet is required.
Okay.
All right.
I know. So the location of the generator, is that...
The back of my home is a ledge. The front of my home is a pond. All my pool equipment is in the exact location of the generator, but because of the legend, the way it all plays out, you'll see in the pictures, it's a couple of feet from all my equipment. But I couldn't bring it closer because then they wouldn't be able to walk and take care of the equipment, because it's all in one very small section.
So you're asking for a five-foot variance?
I'm asking for a five-foot variance to be able to put it where it actually is, but is not... It's not set up presently because I thought that a permit was taken out, and it wasn't. And...
So you've already installed it?
I had an electrician. He told me he had taken a permit out. He installed it. It's not completely connected. When I came to town, because he wasn't calling me back to find out what the status was with the permit, I was told that a permit had not been applied for. So then I hired a new electrician, who then applied for a permit. And hence, that's where I am now. I can't move it closer because there is no real closer. I can't move it to the right because of all the trees in the pool.
Did you...
Is the pool equipment in the same location?
Yeah. It's all within a couple of...
So all the propane tanks, is this propane?
Yeah. There's a picture which shows exactly where the propane is and where all the pool equipment is. It's all in this one very small, very tight section.
And so for that pool equipment, did you have a variance taken for that?
No, because if you look, the pool equipment is like here, and the only place to put this was a few feet.
Because there's a ledge behind that pool equipment.
Yeah. It's just the nature of the...
Yeah.
Of what's there.
And there is no other place on the property you could have located this?
Well, the front yard I can, because I'm already... I'm less than 100 feet to the pond because of just when the house was already built. The other side of the yard is where my driveway is, and the other side of the yard, there's already a property line there. And it's probably about... It's the exact opposite side of where my gas line is, where my gas tank is.
So the location... It's serviced by your gas line, the generator?
It's a propane tank.
It's a propane?
It's a propane tank that's under the ground that services the pool, and...
The same tank that services the pool. So you don't... You didn't have to put in an extra tank?
Right. It's the same... It's right there. It's all... Everything is right there. But the gas line has not been hooked up yet.
Where's the electric box?
This is about 15 feet from my house, so it's right at the back of my house, so it's right there.
And the box is right there at the closest point?
The box might be like 16, 17 feet. It's, you know... I would say between 10 and 17 feet. It's very close to my house, this... Where this is. It's just I created plants to protect me looking at it, and then I have a walkway, and then I have my back door.
So you couldn't have put it further back up?
It's all ledge. I mean, if you see where it's built up, I would have put... I would have been happy to put it lower because I actually see it from my driveway, but it's ledge there. So they actually had to put, you know, the slab for it higher because that whole backyard, we chipped, you know, ledge away 20 some-odd years ago to be able to put the pool in, so everything is ledge.
Where are the propane tanks in regards to this? And you'll need the... Why don't you just tell us with the microphone?
There's a circle over there. It's only one propane tank.
So you want to get it on the record, so you want to talk to the microphone to give us the answer?
The propane tank is about six feet, much lower because the whole backyard goes up.
The ledge goes up.
So the propane tank is about six, seven feet. The circle is the propane tank.
We didn't have the application before the work was done, but it sounds...
Yeah.
It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that the location is required by the circumstances of the property and also where everything else is located, your lines, your tanks, and everything else.
If I couldn't put it there, I wouldn't be able to have one. I'd actually have to have this removed. And as I said, it's not completely set up because once I found out that there was not a application put in, I stopped any work on it, and then I hired somebody else to do it properly.
The board did receive a letter from your neighbor, Julio?
She was just here. I should have called her beforehand. She didn't understand. She thought it was going on her property. She didn't understand that it was a 35-foot versus a 30-foot setback. She thought it was five feet onto her property. So she was just here, and when I explained that to her and showed her the pictures, she left.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to this application? Any neighbors? No, she's not here. So she was mistaken in her...
She didn't understand, and I didn't think... I thought this was, forgive me, a no-brainer because there's no other place that this can go, but I should have let her know. So when she got the letter...
But she's satisfied now?
Yeah. She left. She said, "Okay, no problem."
Okay. It would have been nicer if she told us. Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. Yeah.
I move that we close the hearing.
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 I recommend that we give Paula Yormak of Nine Round Hill Road, this is side yard, variance of five feet. Normally, it would be 35 feet, and this would be 30 feet for a few reasons. The... There is no other place to locate the tanks, the generator and the tanks. The tanks are already in a location. That would make sense to use... The tanks are already in a location that would make sense to use, using the same tanks, yeah. So it wouldn't create a disturbance of the land. The variance, granting the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit sought can't be achieved by any of the means. There seems to be no other location you can put it in. The requested variance is not substantial. It will not have an adverse effect upon the environment. There were neighbors here, but there are no neighbors who, now, once they learned of the situation and understood the facts, there are no neighbors in opposition. It's not a self-created hardship as the property shape and topography does not allow it any other means. Therefore, I suggest that we grant the variance.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carl Ackerman, architect, representing the Loring's.
Can you give us a brief description of what you're asking for?
Sure. We are looking for two front yard variances. One is for the deck, I mean, for the porch itself and one also for the steps extending out. That is the reason for the two variances for the front. For the backyard and also to go back to the front, the house currently does not have a covered front entrance. There's a slight cantilever on the front of the house and then in the winter, there's snow buildup and the reason we're asking for the porch is to have some cover when they enter the house. And we think it's a very nice addition to the house and to the neighborhood, adding some more character to the house. And that is the reason for the porch in the front. The back, we're seeking a variance, making the deck a little bit larger. The deck currently was dropped, a full riser down. It's a trip hazard from the house. So we're seeking to raise up the existing deck, but also extend it. And that is the reason for the variance. Right now, if I could submit this picture, the deck is very narrow and it's very tough for a family with tables and chairs to be out back there.
So what are you doing to this?
You're squaring it off, it seems.
Yeah, we're just, in a sense, doubling the size of it, but we're also raising it up. The framing that's there is going to stay, we're just going to go over the top of it as it's been submitted to the building department.
Okay. Porch with stairs.
So there's three variances, two for the front, the stair and the porch line itself. And then the back is also the rear property line. This is a pretty sizable lot, but the rear yard pinches in. And that's, the original is about forty-eight feet from the property line. I looked in the zoning, this zone required is fifty feet. So it's a cantilever, but it's slightly over as it exists today. And we're seeking relief on the rear yard to make the deck a little bit more usable for a larger family.
You're looking seven foot in the rear?
Yeah.
Thirteen feet in the rear?
Yeah, thirteen.
Thirteen feet in the rear. How many variances are you looking for?
Three.
So front yard?
Front yard sixty feet is required. The proposed setback is fifty-six feet for the porch.
Right.
And fifty-three feet for the stairs.
Oh, the stairs.
Okay. And in the rear, the elevated deck is fifty feet. Setback for the elevated deck is fifty feet. The proposed setback is thirty-seven feet.
Correct.
Is that deck not conforming currently?
It's.
It looks like it is.
It looks like it is, but based on the survey, we'd have to check the accuracy of it, but it's right at the line. And as you can see, the property pinches in. Most of the property to the one side is deeper, not an issue. It pinches in and causes that little bit of hardship there. And that's the reason we're seeking some relief.
Okay. Anyone in the audience?
So.
Are you all right?
Yeah.
Are there any, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this application? I move that we close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to make an application? I need to make the resolution.
I move that we grant a variance for Heath Loring and Lindsay Silverman for a front yard variance of four feet for a porch, front yard variance of seven feet for stairs and a rear yard variance of thirteen feet for expanded deck. The granting of the variance will create no undecisive change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit. That sort, it will improve the property. It appears to be a large lot. The variances are not substantial in light of the setbacks. It is self-created hardship, however, the benefit will certainly outweighs the hardship. And for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance. Six months to start, one year to finish.
And the survey on completion?
On completion, yes.
On completion.
That's it.
I second.
All those in favor?
Say aye.
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 You got it.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Do you want to keep this?
Yeah, no, you can help.
Okay.
Whopper Will Club. Let's go, gentlemen, everyone. The rest of the room.
Almost.
Almost.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zonable Board.
Did we call the Whopper Will?
I did.
So.
This is Whopper Will.
Give us a brief description of what you do.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the goal tonight, this is a amended special permit. We've been before this board several times for various changes that have occurred at the club. My name for the record is Jim Ryan. I'm the principal of JMC with the Planners and Engineers for Whopper Will Club, Inc. With me tonight, if there's any questions of the club, General Manager Jeff Martocci is here. Carl Ackerman is here as the architect from Sullivan Architects. Essentially, our purpose tonight is to do exactly what the chairman asked, to give you an overview of what changes that we're going to be making under the code that requires an amended special permit. And there is a mandatory referral to the planning board, so we're hoping if we can get through this, there's a minimal amount of questions, that we can go to the planning board and seek their input, so this board has an opportunity to make a decision on that basis. Last time we were before this board for a change, we made certain changes which included renovation of the clubhouse. That work has been completed. We had proposed a new paddle ball court, paddle tennis court. That work is underway. That required a variance. We also had proposed some changes to the pavilion building. The pavilion building is centrally located in the site. It's a narrow building right here. If the board recalls, one of the purposes of that was to put a new tennis pro shop in that building. There were other changes of use of that building. Since we had undergone some of these other changes, we relooked at that particular aspect, which was the tennis pro shop, and we started focusing in on the pool house building. Now, the pool house building is fully developed on the lower end of it, it's on the pool side, pool being closer to Whopper Will Road. And essentially, this is the face of the building on the interior, so this is what could be the backside of the pool house building, was actually the front side interior facing. If you look at that building, it looks like it's built out and a complete building, when in fact, the upper level has never been anything more than storage in that building. So what the club had, Mr. Ackerman and Sullivan Architects relook at, the plan for the relocation of the area for the pro shop, and one of the things that we had decided is, let's relook and see if we can adapt and modify this building, which is more ready to go. It's an already sprinkled building, but it's not really anything modified on the inside, so it's just basic structure on the inside, so it's never been fit out. In that building, this shows just the outline of that building. One of the things I would point out, that the advantage of a pro shop in that building is the proximity to the tennis courts. This being the pavilion building up here, what we were looking at is making a couple of changes, putting the pro shop, tennis pro shop in that building and creating a viewing area for the tennis courts. And it became obvious to us that this area here currently has a peak roof and we were looking to modify only that on the exterior. We're not changing or bumping out the building in the exterior to create a viewing deck. And if you were to be anywhere in this area, you can see that that area can oversee all of the tennis courts all at one time. So the proposal is to modify the interior of the building, make only a couple of exterior changes. One would be for access, which is another stairway off of the viewing area, and it really brings you down to an existing pathway system and then allows you to get down easily to the tennis court. So the proximity was something that we wanted to improve. The second change to the exterior would be create a new access in the front of the building, right in this area here. It's essentially dormering out a portion of the building, creating a new doorway there for a secondary means of egress for safety and then creating ADA accessibility. This would have to have an ADA accessible bathroom on the interior. And so we wanted the building to be fully ADA capable and compatible. So we're making few physical changes. It's actually less than a thousand square feet of changes on the exterior. That's just to bring in the stairway access for secondary means of egress. It would be for ADA ramp on the outside and then some changes to the walkway just to make it more accessible. This area shows you, right now, it's a gravel path to that area and it's a stairway, so there's no ramp to get up into this building. So the ramp would be created along this side with a secondary means of egress along the far side, this portion of the front of the building. Now, all of these changes are interior to the site, so there's really no visibility to Whopper Will Road on these changes. These are all better proximity to the existing parking and access for the club. Essentially, these improvements are just to, we're not changing the membership of the club. It's not a new draw, it's just to continue to address the needs of existing membership in the club. So we will be taking down one additional tree and I know we'll be talking to Steve Coleman about that. And it's a tree that is, there's an existing oak tree right here, so creating the viewing area with the large crown on the tree, just to eliminate one tree in that area. The board recalls there's other landscape improvements and most of those landscape improvements are still going forward and those are really in that area, so we held off on those improvements. They're all in this area here, or the stairway. We're holding off on that to see if this is palatable to the board in terms of amended special permit. So in summary, this better meets the needs, I think, of the tennis portion of the club. I think it's a good area in terms of the viewing area. The other uses within that are just club-oriented. We're looking at areas for golf in there too, for, just bear with me, golf simulators in there, two golf simulators, and just really a gathering place for the club. So we complete the interior fit out of that building essentially, so.
Here's the current pro shop.
Pro shop right now?
Show you.
It's not right here. This is the pro shop right here.
That shed was, in a prior approval, is going to be removed. It's a freestanding structure that's to be removed.
It's coming off the property.
Correct. Well, actually, we're moving the function there, but what we're hoping to do is retain that portion there just for storage. So all the remaining areas of the pavilion, in particular where that area is right here, we're still in need of some storage area too, but it wouldn't be functioning as part of the pro shop anymore. So it'd just be storage. That would be maintained on property.
You pointed out earlier with the photo, with the four photos there, that you were going to be putting in an ADA ramp there. Wouldn't you have to remove the tree on the front right side of the building as well?
Yeah. So there's some vegetation in here, it tends to be smaller, there's a clump birch in that area, but we're just going to relocate any vegetation in there around that area. So, yeah, there is some vegetation in that area, but, you know, I think Mr. Gonzalez, who does the maintenance here, most of those small plants, we've just, in the past, have just lifted up and moved to other locations, so.
It's a tree right in the front. If you go to the picture, if you go to the picture of one, where you have the four photos, it's behind the board there, I think. Yeah, so like, isn't that where, isn't that a tree?
It's a small tree right here?
Yeah, that has to be taken out, right?
So we're going to just replant that though. It's small enough, it's about a two-inch caliber tree, so that'll be just relocated somewhere else on the property. So again, our purpose tonight is to answer any questions and hopefully we can go to the planning board for the next agenda and get their input for your board.
So basically, you're using the stairs, you're renovating upstairs?
Yes.
For the pro shop and simulators?
Yes.
And you're putting in ADA compliant walkways and stairs?
To get access to the building, correct? And then another stair, a secondary means of egress off of the area on the right side. This is the backside of the building here. There's a peak roof on that now, so that peak roof would come off and that would be a platform as a deck on that portion of the building. So it'll be right here. So that stair would be on that side of it to allow a second means of egress down and off of that area.
Eric. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At what stage are we now in the overall approval of this application?
So it's an amended site plan approval. The public hearing is open tonight. You can see if any other members of the public want to comment tonight, if there are none. The board can leave the public hearing open. The next step would be if the board is satisfied with the plans as presented, I think you got a memo from the town engineer saying he didn't have any comments with respect to the plans. The town planning director also has made a determination because there's less than four thousand square feet of construction or expansion, we're considering it a type two under SECR, so there's no further action that needs to be taken with respect to SECR. So if the board is satisfied with what's being proposed, the next step would be to refer the application to the planning board and I believe the architectural review board would also need, with a, you know, with the stipulation, I suggest that they try to hear the matter before the zoning board's next hearing, so you can be back and get your recommendations from the planning and ARB and the architectural review board before your next meeting and then, you know, the board may be prepared to make a decision at the next meeting at that time.
Okay. So I think at this point, we just keep the meeting open?
Yep. You'd need a motion to refer it to both the planning board and?
To refer to ARB and planning board.
Correct. With a request that they respond with their recommendations before the zoning board's next meeting if possible.
I like what you said there. I'll make that motion. All those?
I second that motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Holmes and Holmes.
Yeah, I think before we meet on this application, we're going to take a short.
We would make a motion to go into executive session for legal advice. It would be appropriate, need to be a formal motion and seconded and approved by the boards.
So I would like, I'm going to make a motion for any second. I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we meet in executive session for legal advice. All those in, anyone second?
A second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
We're back on line. We, I'd like to make a motion to resume the public hearing.
Or to come out of executive session.
Come out of executive session.
Right.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, what, you're the applicant?
Yes, I'm Charles Napoli.
Okay, tell us, tell us, give us a summary of what it is you're asking for.
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Holmes and Holmes. This is Bill Holmes.
You stated your name.
I said Charles Napoli, yes. And what we're looking for is an interpretation by this board to consider a use for a portion of a new building that we're proposing, to be used for parking and storage for an adjacent business, and I'll show you what we're talking about. We're considering the new space that we've created, an appropriate non-residential ground floor need, in order to help further the goal number 26 of our comp plan, which clearly states that... Creating a sustainable mix of commercial and residential uses. That is goal number 26 of the approved comp plan. What we're looking at is trying to implement a mix of commercial and residential in order to further the goals of the hamlet in the comp plan. And I will bring you up to speed on how, or what that, what that looks like, all right? By the way, this is goal number 26, to create a sustainable mix of commercial and residential uses within the hamlets. And I've highlighted in red, to preserve the Newcastle's bucolic character of low-density development, further on, ensuring context sensitive infill, which our project is, an infill project, and it has to, and it is done in designated redevelopment areas, hamlets or infill areas. We think our site fits the infill component, and also it fits the hamlet, because we're in the hamlet. And what's going on right now is that the town board and the planning board are looking at rezoning, or changing the zoning of our downtown to accomplish goal number 26. And, and, and what they're using, and what they're in the, in the process of building is a form-based code. It's quite different than the code that we're using now that was done 50, 60 years ago. A form-based code is a zoning tool that uses physical form rather than the separation of uses, as the organizing principle of the code. It looks at uses as something, yes, that exists and that we need, but it's not the guiding principle. Uses have always talked about separating parcels and districts. The form-based code says, no, we have to join and combine. So, what we have in our particular case is a, is a property in the business retail zone adjacent to the business retail parking zone. Two zones are quite different, and have different requirements. At the very bottom, it says, uses may still be regulated, and there's no problem with that, though they are not the defining feature of a zoning district. And that's what we're working on now in the form-based code development. Let me take you to the site itself. This is the hamlets when it's snowing. And this is north, this is South Greeley, this is North Greeley. We have the triangle, and of course, the King Street Hill. And I use the word King Street Hill, we've always said King Street Hill around here. Why? Because if I look at the, the definition of topography at this very point, right here, oh, by the way, this is our site, and the site includes all of these buildings, four buildings.
So, that, that was the question I had.
Yeah.
You're, the property owner, the applicant owns all four of the buildings that are shown in...
No. And that's what's nice about this particular site. Back in 2000, when, when everything, three different property owners got together and said, "Let's join our properties and create an area for development," rather than one parcel at a time. So, what they ended up doing was combining three different parcels, and, and then having a joint use factor where they were all sharing parking, they were sharing an, an egress and exit, and they were sharing uses. And this building on the first floor is office, and on, on the, on the second floor, it's apartments. This building is, was a house that turned into an office.
The first building?
This one?
Yes. How does that get access to the street?
Right here. Everybody's sharing.
Everyone has access through that driveway?
Yes, through that drive. This is the Holmes and, this was the old Holmes and Kennedy, now it's Elman, but this is the original Holmes and Kennedy building. And this is a dentist's office. Dr. Lapari is there. His patients either park on the street or go in this entrance and, and, and park in the back as the grade drops off. I was talking about the King Street Hill. This is elevation, it's like 340, and 29 feet later is this elevation, the bottom of the hill. So, if you were going to take the bunny slope, you would come around that way. If you're going to take the straight downhill, you would go 29 or 30 feet straight down this direction. So, there's, the point is that we're on the side of a hill here.
That's alleged.
We're a little hill town. Let me take you to the next, so we're okay in locating this?
Tell me about the ownership again. The applicant is all four owners?
The applicant is 101 King Street.
Okay, and that's a corporation?
That is the LLC Holmes and Holmes. 120, and they own these two buildings on this one property. This owner is Dr. Lapari. He has one little site right here. And this owner is 121 LLC, 121 King Street LLC, that are, these people are all in relationship with one another through an LLC.
Who owns the parking lot? So, again, who is?
Okay.
The application for what you're asking for?
Is on 101 King. I'm just showing you the location of this property.
So, only one of the owners signed, is, is making the application?
Correct. It's a, it's a separate property, 101 King Street.
So, and that property is, which one, which, which of the property is...
All right, I'll turn this on.
Because I don't want to deal with property that doesn't belong to the applicant.
Yeah, in this case, the reason I am bringing all of them in is because they're already sharing parking. The two, the two, the three sites all work together. It's, it's, it's one of those things where we...
Are they easements?
Yeah, they've got all cross easements. And, and it's, it's when, it's more of a form-based code right now that says if we all got together and shared our resources, we, we will, we don't have to separate into separate parcels, we'll all work together.
Have they been notified of this?
Oh, yeah. As a matter of fact, Mr. Holmes is...
I own. I control D, and, and B and A.
What do you mean you control D? Do you own D?
What?
You own D?
Yes.
And you own, you own A and B?
Yeah.
Well, it's an LLC.
Yeah.
There's, there are other members. I don't know who the majority member is that may be Mr....
Lapari owns C.
And Mr. Lapari owns C.
And C's the one that, that's on King Street?
That's on King Street, and so is 101 King.
And 101 is on King Street. And B is used currently for what use?
Office on the first floor, apartments on the top floor, and apartments on the bottom floor. Because of the hillside, there's, and I'll show you a picture of what I mean by that. But one of the, the other thing that's going on with this particular site, you see this blue across the whole back? Back in 1960, the town gave the LLC a dollar, and that is now part of the parking district. And all the cars in the back are parking in that area. You could see, somebody had one of these that works.
That's part of the lot that the dry cleaner uses?
The dry cleaner, no, the dry cleaner is over here.
So, who uses that parking where the blue is?
That's the Verizon parking lot, and everybody uses that, and I don't know, I can't tell you who they are.
No, but I mean...
It's, it's a town parking district. Anybody could use it.
And that's, that's the, the parking lots are behind the restaurants there?
Yeah, that's over here.
So, where is Jardine?
Right here.
And then you go down the steps and you did that parking lot?
Absolutely right. And can I show you that? Maybe, maybe I could.
Right, there you are.
All right? So, here we, here's the building in question. Can somebody have a pointer that I can use? Mine is just, it's kind of going out of, it feels like I'm shooting blanks here. That's the building, if you don't mind the blipping.
Right, so that's the building.
There's the apartment building, with the apartments on the top, offices on the bottom. This is Dr. Lapari. Here's the hillside. It starts here and goes down, down, and ends up at elevation 305, all right? And this is the old Holmes and Kennedy building now, Elman.
So, where is that blue strip that you mentioned?
Let me...
I never, I never knew it was parking there.
There it is. There's that blue strip I was talking about.
I've never seen that.
Yeah. Yep. And, and by the way, the property line that LLC owns is here. And for a dollar, they got a dollar and they let the town park on it.
The town has the right to use that?
Yep. It's parking district, because there's not a lot of parking in town. And the other thing that is also with this whole corner right here is also in the parking district. That's a separate parcel, a separate deed, a separate meets-inbounds, and that is also in the parking district. And this is the building that was a house, now an office, but if you notice, it's got three floors, two and a half floors, but you can see the hillside comes down, comes down, comes down, and this is the basement. So, what, what we've come up with is to re, redo this building, make it a little bit bigger, and add apartments on the top.
That's the building in question?
That's the one we're working on. That's building B. And, and what's going on in building B right now, yeah, is there's offices accessible by this elevation in the front, but in the, underneath, right here, is a storage basement that is used by La Jardine. In, in, in the, in the business district, you can't put a basement. It's, it's in the way to build basements here, because you're underwater in two feet. Everything's on grade, everything's on piles, and we have a very, very high water table. You could see the problem they're having doing the new drainage on North Greeley. They're in water without, the minute you dig a hole. Anyway, what we're doing is expanding this building and making it look like that. So, the back of the building will be now at the level of the back parking lot. It is, because it's out of the ground, it's considered a story. And, and, and the code says that if you want to put apartments on top of the first floor, you need to have business retail underneath. Well, we submit, first of all, that's not a good place for business retail. Second of all, your business retail in this market is not exactly the, the smart move. Brick and mortar establishments are having trouble. We're complicated even further by Chapacqua Crossing adding the potential of maybe 25 to 30 new stores up there. So, business retail wouldn't work for us, but is there another form of business or commercial or, or some other non-residential use for that floor? The interpretation we are requesting is, would you consider rental of storage for La Jardine and parking as a garage? As, as another use, another income producer, another form of commerce, but not business retail? I, I think, I, I think that's, that's, I think that's our basic request.
Looking for a use variance?
I don't want a use variance, no.
No, I don't, let me, I'm interjecting. The, the issue, the application that's before the board right now is for a use variance and a small area variance as well. I, I've notified the applicant by letter, you know, that the standards, that, that they had not demonstrated to the board that the standards for a use variance are met. What I'm hearing now is that there is a, now a request for an interpretation of the, of the building inspector's determina, denial determination. Possibly, you know, based on, and I'm not saying it's, you know, valid or invalid. The problem that the board has is the notices that went out to the neighboring property owners were for a use variance, and we cannot hear tonight, or make a determination tonight with respect to an interpretation. And that would need to be, you know, an amended application with a new notice that goes out to the neighboring property owners, new public notice, so that people are aware that that's what is before the board. And the board, you know, gave dispensation to you, you, you came tonight with your client and wanted to hear what, what you had to say. But the board cannot make, the board cannot hear or make a determination with respect to an interpretation without an amendment to the application requesting that relief, basically, which is a completely different section of the code than the use variance and the area variance that were asked, so.
I wish I knew what area of the code that was, but...
For an interpretation?
Yeah.
And I can...
Well, no, no, but there is an area.
It's under, yes, it's under the zoning board. There's a specific...
The section that deals with the zoning board and what we're empowered to do.
Right.
One of those sections says, deals with interpretation.
I think that's where, that's where I'd like to be.
So, what, what we can do is, if, if, if the applicant wants to withdraw the use variance request and file an amended application, I don't, you know, I would ask, I don't know from the town's perspective if they would require a new fee, but you just need to submit an amended application. Setting forth the relief you're requesting, I can certainly talk to you about what section and what, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
And you would need to do your new notices and then come back next month, as soon as you can get the new app, the amended application, and in time, come back next month, you know, and now you, the board certainly has a good background on what, you know, you're looking at, but they would need to rehear that aspect of it, which may in fact be a, you know, more, you know, more of a valid argument than the use variance based on what they have before them today, so.
I think in the, in the, in the weeks that we were preparing for this, my dog got kicked a lot because I just couldn't figure out what to say or how, how to reconcile an existing ordinance and new goals. I had, I had, I had a real problem. My wife also had a problem with me for the last two weeks, trying, trying to figure out how to handle this. Knowing that council has an area for your board to evaluate or even interpret, that, that's going to make me feel better and, and, and be able to further my application's final goal, and that is to put more apartments in the middle of the hamlet, because that's what's missing. And, and we think, we think this is a way to do it, this is a way to do it and accomplish some of the needs and goals of the master and the comp plan. And of course, there's lots of benefits that we could talk about if those apartments were there. By the way, they're ones, they're one-bedroom apartments, so there's, there's not a problem with the school system being impacted. The only thing that it will do is pay more taxes and put more people on the street.
Are there apartments there now, correct?
No. The existing building is an office. It used to be a house, yeah.
An office?
Yeah. And one of the other things...
Is it, is it fully rented?
Is that fully rented, the office?
Yeah.
And who's occupied it?
Two people on one side, a decorator and a, and Chapacqua Learning Center, and then on the other side is a nonprofit who sets their headquarters.
Ah, I think it's Headway. Is that Mr. Manley? Is that Mr. Manley, the Headway Foundation? Yeah. Anyway, the, one of the things that, if you don't mind, just a little bit more, the original building as it stands took up five parking places because it's office. We have eight parking places with six apartments, because you do one and a third per apartment. The latest, the latest thinking on parking is one space per apartment. So what was five spaces-
You said the latest thinking?
Well, the latest planning standards for multifamily.
What does the code require? Our code requires?
Our code says one and a third. Yeah.
Would you, would you comply with that?
Oh, definitely. What we have is, we need, because of the joint use factor, we need 42 spaces. We provide 44.
So you have no parking issues?
Not at all.
You would have none?
We have a parking, yeah, we have, we have a little bit more parking.
Spaces for sale.
Okay. And, and the, the only change you are looking to make is to that building?
That's it. Obviously some site work. There's a garbage, there's a garbage dumpster right here, I'm moving it to here. I don't want it close to the building, I'm going to put it over there. There's some planting that we have to do, but the biggest change is that instead of that down floor being just storage that he's renting to La Jardin, we're adding the four garages. And-
Which would be rented to the-
Rented to somebody on the property.
Someone on the property.
Anybody, because it's a joint use.
Or it could be rented off the property.
Oh, yeah.
Someone off the property.
Well, no, because, because we have two extra spaces. Remember I said we've got 44, we only need 42? There's two spaces left for somebody's Ferrari and somebody's Bentley heated, if they wanted it.
So the 44, you're saying is inclusive of these four?
The-
The 44 required would require, would include the two in the building?
Yes.
There's four in the building, right?
There's four in the building. The other thing that, that, that this accomplishes is that if this were a separate, I don't want to say spot zoned housing district.
Don't use that word.
I don't want to use that word. But if this were a separate parcel just for Chappaqua multifamily, multifamily Chappaqua regulations, which would be really hard to do in a parcel listing out amongst all the other easements and all of the other agreements between the corporations, if it were, then that housing ordinance says parking should be enclosed, and in addition to that, storage for the units should be supplied.
What are you talking about now? If it were, what are you talking?
Yeah, see, this, if, what I'm saying is that we're building this thing to meet the current housing code.
Right.
We are providing enclosed parking, we're providing storage for the units. Should it be somewhere else on a multifamily Chappaqua zone, which I don't think it's going to be that anymore when the new code comes out?
Are you talking about a possible change in the code and then?
Nope. Not at all. I'm just saying we meet the existing requirements of multifamily housing by having a storage unit and a garage.
So for, let me ask you, so for argument's sake, furthest left, there's a car there and a storage unit.
Yes.
That, that parking space would be dedicated to an apartment upstairs?
No, it would be dedicated to somebody on the property. If the apartment wanted-
So how would the applicant-
I would put a door right here.
And what about the one in the middle?
There's a door here in the middle?
No, and then go in the third door?
Nope, these two would be part, these two would be part of the, the ones that are free, you know, the two extra spaces that are free. This space, this area here is for the storage for La Jardin. They're heated, enclosed storage.
How many apartments are being proposed?
Six.
And, so then the other parking would be located elsewhere on the parcel?
Yep, yeah, out of the total of-
In the district.
Yeah.
That would be, except that's, the numbers work.
Yep.
Mr. Napoli?
Yes.
What is the legal address of that non-residential area?
Well, it's not on the street. So it's 101 King.
113.
Actually 113, is that what it is in the back? 113 King.
113 King is the legal address on that?
Right there, at that door.
113 and 115.
But those garages do not face or front, you know?
No.
113 King. They actually front on a park, a common parking lot, sir?
Yeah, common.
To your area, your buildings?
Yeah.
Say that again?
It's a common parking lot to that private area of buildings.
Right.
Go back to the last picture.
And we never have, it's never crowded.
I've seen the parking lot and I agree with you. Yeah, I've seen it, it's never full occupancy.
Where would the, the garage doors would be? On the bottom, right?
Where that shed is, you're seeing.
Where the shed is, the shed go away.
Right there.
My concern is that those non-residential uses are their address and they're fronting on a parking lot. Or do we have fire safety requirements? You know, is that going to be a fire access area?
Well, we're really fortunate, you know, that fire department can get around this whole doggone building really quick and easy. They could come in the front, they could come in the back. As a matter of fact, coming in the back is how we're going to build this thing. It's a modular construction, so construction time is minimal, but it's arriving at this point.
Well, that would be another question, assuming the zoning board makes an interpretation favorable, would they need then cite plan approval for this with respect to-
Compliance.
And there's a lot of different requirements with respect to this type of building, which I had cited in the latter, right? Very true.
And I totally agree.
If the interpretation you're asking for were granted, would it also have application to any of the other buildings on the site?
Well, no.
This is the only building I asked Chuck that this would apply to, this application.
Well, it's the only one on this side of the hill, it's the only one that creates a whole story as, instead of a basement, it's, it's a story. There is, I don't-
So the other buildings could all be, all contain residential use?
Yeah, well, this one, this one, by the way, since it's on the street, has an office on the first floor, it has an apartment on the top like you're supposed to, but it also has an apartment on the bottom because of the hillside dropping off. So it has residential. Similarly, over here on this building, it has apartments at the lowest level also.
The brick building?
The brick.
The brick?
And is there commercial down on the mainboard?
There's office, there's office on the first floor, which are really hard to rent, being that far back and off the street. But certainly, definitely not a place for business retail.
Presidential in that brick building?
With, yeah, it is, on the top and on the very bottom.
Is that where the ski place used to be?
Say again?
Is that where that ski place, that ski store, remember that ski store, Sally? Remember there was a ski store back there? Maybe that's where the condos went, I guess.
I, maybe over here on this.
Maybe it must have been there.
Yeah. And speaking about that, those condos are on the same hill that we're on here. And if you go back in there, every single one of the condo units has a garage underneath. Because part of the requirement of multifamily housing was to have enclosed parking.
So you're saying if this were a part of a condo complex?
Boom, it'd be good. We wouldn't be here.
If we were in MFRD, yes, you'd have a valid argument.
If he was, yeah, and if they rezoned it.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you considered having any conversations with the town?
Well, actually, yes. They're in the middle of Form Based Code conversations and building a Form Based Code, which I know the town of Concord, New Hampshire, it's taken two and a half to three years to do. And so, will probably take a couple of years, since it took us five years to even get a comp plan. But, but, I talked to the planning board chairman, and he said, bring this presentation to the next meeting that they have with the town board as a joint board, to look at what's possible for Form Based. Now, Form Based is not, and, and, and don't get mad at me, but you can't write an attitude. You can't write welcoming, friendly, intimate. You have to build it. And that's my job. And so what we're trying to do is use three dimensional things, not uses, but three dimensional components of a comprehensive plan that the town already wants and combining them. This is a perfect example of a Form Based Code application. Now, but it needs an interpretation, so I'm, I, I'm finished.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, it was interesting. But we understand you are going to then making-
I'm coming back.
Coming back, okay.
You're going to amend, you're going to amend, the applicant's going to amend the current application, you're going to withdraw or withdraw the use variance and proceed with an interpretation of the building inspector's determination? That's my understanding.
The code section.
Because a use variance doesn't, it doesn't-
You understand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for understanding.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Kent, where are we at this point?
Eric, I'm sorry. Eric, I'm sorry. We can, you know, I would-
Oh, just one more thing, please. I'm sorry, I have to show you this picture. This is the top of the hill. This is the Talbot Shopping Center. You can see the curve and sorry. Back in 1960 when they wrote this code, they said you have to have a lot of parking, especially for the holidays. And so we had to build all of this parking, all of this parking and all of this parking for these three buildings. Nobody goes back there now. I put a little red section at the end of that saying that that would be a great place to add some more housing. And, and lo and behold, if we wanted to, we wouldn't be allowed to do it because we'd have to have a store underneath. But look at, this is like an infill, a perfect example of what's possible when you do an infill. You could put three or four units back there, it's walkable to the whole top of the hill, and it doesn't impact the existing parking, which was overdesigned to begin with. And anyway, so I just wanted, I wanted to point out that there's opportunities to implement the mess, the comprehensive plans, goals and needs of adding more residential in the hamlets. All right? And there's a place to, a way to do it.
So if the applicant's withdrawing, you know, the application, I don't think you have to make any determination with respect to the current application or close the public hearing, you would be wait, you know, if withdrawal doesn't occur before the next meeting, we could then dispose of the application. But, you know, we'll, we'll see what the applicant presents before the next meeting. So I would leave the public hearing open at this point. Let's see what comes in and how things play out before the next meeting. That would be my recommendation at this point. I would just make a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the next zoning board meeting.
Do we have any minutes to approve?
Yes.
Thank you, Walter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we move on to the approval of the minutes as written. Anyone have any comments? Tony's not here, so who knows what? I'm sorry, yes?
I forgot my folder.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
I second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes are approved, and I move that we adjourn the meeting?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.